It's approvable.
This is the one, Mr. President?
You know about that, Tommy? Item number one.
Mr. Jim Wright, this is the one that we put on hold.
Yeah, and I got...
But now it's time to go ahead and move forward.
I got a call from the architect this afternoon, engineer.
Say what?
They're okay to go with it now.
Okay.
This rezoning was approved by the planning commission, recommended to be rezoned for commercial and industrial...
Yeah, this is a piece of property that conforms to everything around it, so it makes it one piece of property whole.
That's correct.
Okay, we're good. Thank you, Tommy. On item number two?
This was unanimously approved by the planning commission for a mobile home.
Yes, a mobile home. Yeah, nothing big there. Just mobile home out there on the north side of town. Is that inside the city limits? Is that them in PJ? Must be PJ. Yep, PJ. Okay, number three is the refunding agreement for the Salvation Army.
Stacy.
Stacy, tell me about it.
This is just when the agreement was initially approved by the council, there was some language in there that we would make every effort to obtain the Salvation Army property. That language was subsequently taken out in the amended funding agreement. Since then, there have been some more discussions and negotiations, and we think we've made, gotten an agreement in place with the Salvation Army. So this restated agreement is simply putting that language back in there, saying the city council is going to authorize us to attempt to negotiate again with the Salvation Army and get their property to give it to the district.
This is the finalization, so it turns over to...
Stacy, do we have the address correct? Because the original map that we sent had two addresses, and one of those properties is a property that we do not need with the...
Yeah, I emailed you, I think, an amended MOA. It's the property that's going to be on the north side of Maxwell Boulevard that is in the exhibit attached to the MOA. It's the property that's in that exhibit. So it's not the property on the south side.
We're not getting the property on the south side?
No.
It's not the warehouse.
The district said they didn't...
Oh, they're getting the warehouse?
Yeah, they keep the warehouse, because they want an additional five hundred thousand.
The district said they only needed the property on the...
On the north side of the street.
I know that, yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Mr. President.
You're good, Mr. Calhoun?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask a question? To, for, and make sure I understand this, to the cities, the city's responsibility is 2.5. Is that correct?
That's correct.
City's responsibility is to pay the Salvation Army five million dollars. Now, how we get it?
We're not coming up with a total five million.
We're not coming up with the total, but our...
Our obligation...
Our obligation is 2.5.
To make sure it comes together.
Okay, okay. That's all I want to know.
All right, number four. Mr. Pierce, come forward, please. All right. And you have a person here I'm not familiar with.
Chairman, my name is Alston Ray. I'm with the Butler Snow Firm in Birmingham, and we have the honor of being bond counsel to the city on this issue, working with Scott.
Okay, so you're the bond counsel?
Yes, sir, and...
You're what now, Tom?
I'm doing disclosure counsel work in this...
Okay, yeah, I had a question right off the bat. And I, in paragraph two, item, I mean, section one, item number two, it says that 2021-A is to refi, to finance improvements. And then you go down to 2021-B, it refunds warrants currently eligible for tax exempt funding. And then 2021-C is for currently eligible for tax exempt refunding. So is this just one tax, one bond issue? Or is it three bond issues, or...
It, the way that is written is intended to cover the fact that the Series A, Series 21A, would cover the new money, the capital improvements for the city.
Includes all of them?
Yes, sir, and those would be taxing, those would be issued on a tax exempt basis. This Series 21B would cover the portion of the various series of bonds that are being refunded that are eligible right now for tax exempt financing.
Okay.
Refunding. And then C, which is a small component as presently identified...
So the total, the total is fifty million dollars of total bond issue that's being split according to what you just said. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, about fifty million dollars of new money estimated, and then approximately sixty million dollars of refunding, both tax exempt and those, the last piece is a small piece of about four million dollars that is not eligible under the tax code for refunding on a tax exempt basis, so that would be the smallest component.
So our, my question is, the statement's saying to finance the improvements.
Yes, sir.
And then further down in this, in this paperwork, it shows fifty million dollars. Now, how much are we, how much of the bond issue is going to be total bond issue refinancing everything? What's the total number?
There's not a bond issue.
It is. Series 221A is a part of the... How much are we borrowing?
Hi. Let me explain it to you in layman's, I mean, layman's language, the way I understand it, okay? Series 2021A is new money. It could be up to fifty million. We don't know yet, because everything that's going to be included in those capital improvements or a new building, whatever the case may be, has not been, we don't have preliminary numbers on that yet, okay?
So we're, we're talking about a bond issue that we don't know how big it's going to be?
Well, it won't exceed fifty.
It won't exceed fifty, but we're, we're thinking fifty.
Yeah.
But we don't have a list for that.
Right, new money.
So that's...
That's new money only.
New money, okay. What's the old money?
Mr. Jim Wright, let me ask you a question. That's a brand-new bond. That's a brand-new bond, bond money.
That's up to fifty in new money, not to exceed that, okay?
New money, fifty million?
It could be less. Yes, it could be less.
That's...
We don't know at this point. And the other, the rest of it is...
Refinancing.
You were told here by Mr. Ray, I want to make sure I got your name right, the B part of this, twenty, let me do this.
Put it down.
Twenty twenty-one D, okay? That is refunding those funds that we already have on our books that are callable, that are tax exempt, okay? You have to separate.
Okay, got you.
You can't mix the taxable and the tax exempt.
Understand, tax exempt.
And then the four million is just one large payment that we have coming up in 2022 that we want to get deferred, okay? So it has to be on separate series. So therefore, you've got A, B, and C.
So the total refinancing of the B and C?
Is going to be what's on our books now. It'll be less than that because of the interest rate.
How much money is that?
And the par money. But on our books today, you're talking about somewhere between ninety-two and ninety-four million dollars, okay?
So total...
But when we go to the market, it'll actually come in less than that.
So what we're talking about today is financing worth one hundred and forty million dollars?
In that range, yes, sir.
Okay, now, I'm clear.
Does that make sense to you now?
I understand exactly. I just didn't know what the number was.
Okay.
Because when I read fifty million dollars, that was on new money.
Yeah.
It is, it's new money for new improvements that we don't know what they're going to be yet, right?
Right.
Okay, I'm clear now. Thank you.
But we want to get this started, so we can get working on the process.
I understand that, understand all that, but I just, I was told that this was just, that was one bond issue, but it's not. It's three different...
It's three issues.
Three different issues, right.
Correct.
So B and C is the refinancing, reissueing.
So we're looking at one hundred and forty million dollars.
That's the reissue from B and C. A is new.
A is new, up to fifty million dollars.
Up to.
On project that has not been defined.
It would be multiple projects, I'm sure, but we don't have how much any one project could cost or what all of the projects are for that matter.
And none of those will come back before us, before we do anything, right?
Oh, yes, yes. This is just letting us get started, working on it.
This is your opening veil on all this.
But we don't even know, one, we, Mr. Wright, we don't even know what we're working on. Two, I have a question, is why didn't, why didn't we split this up into a resolution for refinancing and a resolution for a bond issue?
Where, they're...
They're all bonds.
I'm sorry, say that again.
They're all bonds.
They are all bonds, but there's a huge difference in refinancing what we've got versus borrowing new money.
Right.
There's a big difference, in my opinion.
Exactly, and that's my point. We've already borrowed ninety million dollars, we're going to refinance ninety million.
Right.
We're going to borrow another fifty million.
That's right.
That's it.
And that's two separate issues, and it just didn't...
Actually, three different issues.
Right.
But typically, it's really one bond issue with three series of bonds, and the same team is working on it, and it's just basically a, a resolution for the work on it. It's typically done this way.
I understand.
It's one bond issue divided into three series.
But what if, but what if some of us may have an issue with the fifty million but don't have an issue with the refinancing?
Well, we would try to get all that resolved before you do, put the ordinance before you.
You'll have a, you'll have a...
You have another opportunity.
You'll have a bond ordinance that comes back before you that sets forth how the use of the new money, the refunding, and all the rest of it.
It's just to get the work started.
Right.
So all you're doing today?
If you all remember, those of you who were here in 2006, CC, excuse me, Ms. Calhoun, you were here, and we had a 2006 A, B, and C, remember? Gateway Park, we had parking decks.
Right.
This is no different from that.
But also, though, Ms. Betty, in 2006, we knew where the money was going to go.
Well, you will on this before you pass an ordinance on it.
Yeah, you're going to pass an ordinance.
It takes us a minute to do all this work, so we have to get...
This is just a resolution to give you, to get you started.
To give us permission, because you've got to have bond counsel, you've got to have your underwriters, you've got to have all these people in place to get this done, and we can't do it without you all saying, "Go ahead and get started." This is not saying that this is what's going to happen. It lets us start the work.
It just starts the work.
It starts the work.
Okay, I understand better now. Anybody else understand? Anybody got any questions?
I'm good.
All right, everybody's good. You did a good job explaining it to us, Ms. Betty.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, I'm real pleased, and you all did good. Now we know you, we've been, we got to turn you loose, okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You got a, you got a resolution substitute on that one.
Yeah, it is.
Counsel, you saw that on your desk. And all it is, is the name of the JP Morgan Securities is the only difference in the All right, number five. Who's dealing with this thing? Let me, this is part of a, a Lear, Lear, a package for Lear. You know anything about that? Anybody know anything about this? We'll carry it over. Nobody knows about it, might as well not do it.
Where it come from, Chuck? Where did it originate? Where did this originate from?
This is something to do with improving the property around Lear Corporation, is what I think it is, but I'm not sure.
So who put, who put it on the agenda, what I'm trying to ask?
I don't know.
So...
I didn't put it on the agenda. It just showed up.
Somebody emailed it, right? I'm quite sure.
It came to me from engineering, from Holly in engineering.
It what, what?
It came to me from Holly Olson in engineering. She works with the transportation, the Aldott agreements.
It came to us from state.
It came to us from...
Aldott.
Yeah, Aldott works with engineering. Engineering gave us the resolution.
So Chris Conway would know about it?
He should, yes, sir.
Chris of Rock?
He's...
Robert Smith, you have any information on this?
Robert, you got any idea what this is?
Yes, sir. From my understanding, this is for an industrial access project that was applied for through the engineering department, that engineering department won for the city. And I guess this is an expansion of, not an expansion, but just the resurfacing for the industrial park on former Parkway.
Robert, so why wouldn't this come through MPO? Could be a MPO project?
Yeah, I think that it did come through the MPO, but there is a formal agreement that has to be signed between the city and Aldott as well, so it's, it's an additional step.
This part of an incentive package for Lear to, is that what you said it was? I'm sorry, I got, got sidetracked up here.
Yes, that is correct. It's for the expansion of Lear.
Harvey, the incentive for the expansion of Lear?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay.
But they, but again, they did apply for an industrial access grant for this project.
And that's what this is?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. You answered my question. Thank you very much, Robert.
Yes.
All right, item number six, alternative transportation. We'll see who shows up on that one.
Mr. President, the finance department just brought to my attention that he owes taxes on another business license.
Oh, he does.
That's what Mrs. Owen just told me.
Bad guy, okay.
Trying to sneak in, he do.
It's a good easy, good way to start a new business, you don't pay the old one, yeah.
So we're going to deny this?
Walk away, and you hadn't got to worry about that one.
I'm going to tell him why you...
Well, maybe we'll remind you of that this afternoon then, okay? Thank you. Number seven, Family Dollar is getting a liquor license, retail wine and Family Dollar. Is that just, that's one, Easton Boulevard store, number one. Anybody got any questions about that? I guess that's in years from Monday. All right, number eight, this is a, we're going to get beer and wine for the axe-throwing. That's going to be a good one. I hope they know what they're doing.
Customers beware.
Yeah, you get a few little liquor and them throwing at axes, it'd be a ballgame, wouldn't it? All right, we'll see when they come in, how they respond to that. And then we're going to tear down five houses today. Then we got some abatements we're going to do, and that's it. Anybody else got anything they want to talk about?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
There are a couple of things I'd like to share with the council?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, okay.
Pro it right there. He coming.
Okay. Is this mic on? Okay.
Yeah, you're on, I got you. I just couldn't tell where you're coming from.
One, I wanted to share that, you know, we're always looking for ways to try to clean up the city, and it's how to make the city look better, and we had some conversations about the litter and things along those lines, some recent conversations. There's one thing I want Phil, if you will, to pass out. We've also been looking at billboards and signage. One of, some of the complaints I get just seems to be a proliferation of billboards, in particular in certain areas. This is an example of some of the work that Phil Ensler has done in benchmarking other cities.
Thank you, sir.
We have, this is not a final document whatsoever, it's a working document, to look at, trying to bring some uniformity into some of the signage and some of the, maybe look at limiting some of the billboards. It seems to just be a lot of billboards, a lot of clutter, with a lot of things relative to some of your newer developments and newer cities, if you will. Also, we see signs that are in certain parts of the city that are painted on, that don't help with the, I guess, the landscaping of the overall community in the business district. And we've heard from, not only business owners, but I've heard from some of you on the council about that. And so what we have right before us is just a type of ordinance that we're working through to present to you all, to see if it's something that the council wants to do to limit that. Again, we try to look for ways to make the city look more appealing to the eye, and a lot of that has, you know, things to do with it when you don't have business owners and landlords that are putting money back into their establishments. And so we want to try to bring some uniformity to that, so that whether you're on Southern Boulevard or you're out on Chantilly Parkway, that, you know, looks nice, and that the businesses are doing their part to invest. Because I think that if they're going to come and get a license, they ought to be certain levels of codes and, and, you know, responsibilities that they have to open up their business. You just can't open up a business and hand paint a sign up there next to somebody who's trying to operate and establish business or wants to beautify their own. So that's just a working document we wanted to share with you. This is something we're also looking at in terms of the homeless challenge that we have. You know, again, some of you all have brought that up to us as it relates to, you know, how do we deal with that in light of the lawsuit against the city? We're also looking at some best practices to try to address that, and our staff has been very good at identifying some federal funds that we'll be receiving through CDBG grants that we hope will help us with this as well. I think we've got at least a half a million dollars, maybe more, that's coming towards a mid, I think it's Mid-Alabama Homeless Coalition, that we'll be working with, that we just applied for and we should have. So we're going to try to, you know, get as many of the services and as much help as we can out there to help those that are homeless and help those that, you know, out on the streets and some of these intersections that we've been talking about. And we're also looking at other initiatives that some cities have done as well. I'll be on a call tomorrow with some solutions that have seen have worked in other cities that we're going to see if maybe they could be applicable here. So I wanted to share those two things with you, along with, there's a call for an organization that we re-upped our membership with, and that's the National League of Cities. I want to encourage all of you to try to become a part of that. I know I've been helped a lot in my new tenure here through the U.S. Conference of Mayors and African-American Mayors Association. The National League of Cities is something that is open to council members, from everything, from public safety to infrastructure to technology to healthcare, all the things that you all deal with on a daily basis that I'm sure I don't get, that you all get, being on the council, are things that the National League of Cities seeks to bring to its members, being resources, thoughts, and ideas, best practices, and things along those lines. And so we sent out an email to you, I think maybe the last week, and just wanted to remind you that if you do have the time to try to be active, we are paying for it. It's not just for me, it is for all of us that are a part of this governing body for the city of Montgomery, and I think it can be helpful to maybe give us some new approaches to problems that other cities are facing, and maybe come up with some solutions that other cities and other communities have had as well. So just wanted to remind you all of those couple of things. And then finally, as it relates to the bond issue, just keeping it very, very simply, I know Councilman Pruitt has some questions. There are, the public safety is first and foremost where we are trying to invest some of this money. And we have asked for some detail from the fire department, fire and rescue state provider, as well as police, and some of the information that we're trying to get from other departments is information, we're trying to determine whether or not it can be utilized under disrefinancing or not. But it's to address many of these issues that we've been talking about. Unfortunately, you know, they all have to be used for capital expenditures, and so some of the other things that I think I've heard some of you all bring up, we won't be able to do. But we certainly want to have some discussions with you, as many as needed, over the next couple of weeks. We're just kind of up against it to make sure we could get to maximize the savings for the city and refinancing to get it to you right now. But we certainly plan to sit down, I think we've got a meeting already scheduled with President Jim Wright and the Pro Tem, and then any other, you know, individual conversations we need to have, I'm more than willing to do that as we move along, to kind of share what we have so far and to see kind of what else we can do. So there is, I don't want you to think that we're just coming and just saying, hey, there's a chance to get, you know, money at a low interest rate, or a historically low interest rate, but there are needs, some of those needs we had to cut out, you know, last year because of the budget and because of the conservative approach we took to this year. And then there are other needs that I think have been put off for some time, that because the money is as cheap as it is, it may, and I'm going to emphasize the word "may," make sense to invest in some of those things that the council and previous administration just couldn't do prior to that. So we've got some of these sales, and we'll certainly be willing to share some more as we kind of compile all that and get it to you long before there's a time to vote on the approval.
Mr. Wright, let me, let me respond to the mayor. Mayor, one, I think you did a great job with the budget, as difficult as it was. Now that being said, you know, second, this is the first time that the council has heard about the fifty million dollars in my, that I've heard about it. You know, we have a line of credit out there that we went and got for, I think it's, is it thirty-five million that we haven't touched? So, I mean, at almost a zero percent interest, so, you know, for us to say that we're just going to borrow the money and take a look at some things, you know, we, we know if we borrow money, you've got to use it for capital improvements and capital expenditures. You can't use it for, you know, police salaries, fire salaries, overtime salaries, you know, for police or fire. Can't use it for parks and rec overtime with these guys working, you know, the softball and baseball. So, you know, I don't know, I just think we're putting the cart before the horse on this thing, and, you know, I just got some concerns about it, especially when we've got thirty-five million dollars sitting out there that we have not touched.
Sure, and I, I think we can have some further discussion about kind of the line of credit and that versus kind of where we are right now, but I think the refinancing is more of a, of a timing issue.
I'm all with the refinancing now.
Okay. And it's, and it's not, it may, it may not be, you know, that fifty mil, it may not be that, that is just the max. So again, that, that's part of the, the information we're trying to discern, and we're trying to make sure we flush out.
And, and I heard the guys say, you know, it's all pretty much one issue, but just in my opinion, I wish it would have been set out as, and I'm just making up numbers, Resolution A for the refinancing and Resolution B for, you know, the bond issue. That's just me, but I understand we've got to do what we've got to do.
Fair enough.
I think, I think our meeting, Mr. Calhoun and I, we'll have with the mayor Thursday afternoon, we'll get into that and start working how we're going to, what we're going to need, what the needs are. I think it's, we really need to do some things, and I've talked to several council members, and I think all of us in the same, to improve the city and to do things to get us to the next level, we're going to have to do some things that probably are a little bit more out, step outside the box. And so I think that's what we'll be talking about on Thursday.
All right, Mr. President, I have one, and I just want to bring this up for the council thought. Listening at what the mayor and talked about, about the billboards and signings, we sent out an ordinance last week that we kind of looked at from Mobile about the panhandling, panhandling issue. I just wanted to make sure the council start looking at that, and maybe we can partner and talk with Phil as we put this together, because it kind of amazes me that Mobile can have a panhandling ordinance that's enforceable in court, and we get to have to go to court and fight for something that we find passionate in the city of Montgomery with this panhandling and this littering. So let's just start looking at that and come up with something as a council as a whole that we can present and pass that can be...
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a contact in Mobile that tells us what's happening with their situation?
Yes, I do have a contact in Mobile that can give us an update on that, and I can set that up, be a conference call, a Zoom call if you want, want to do that, Mr. President.
Look who's here. A man has been beat up, and he's back on his feet.
Yes, sir.
Richard, come in, Richard.
Slow down, man.
He's speeding. He wanted to prove he can do it. Good. Welcome back, Fisher. Anyway, I think we, you know, we need to, I think what we did, I did something this last week on the panhandle, and I, I sent the litter crew out there to clean up around them.
Yeah, I think what we got...
And it, and it looked better around them when they don't have all that trash around, you know? And then Mr. Pruitt had a picture of one of them where he was digging through the stuff and got mad because he couldn't find what he wanted. But anyway, I think the litter crew, I, I'm real pleased the litter crew's back out working again and it seemed to be doing a really good job. And, uh, so that's, that's a, that's a very positive thing, even though these people are, 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 do make a mess when they're there. And I understand the police department is doing some review with the, with these people too. Talking to them, trying to find a place to help them, whatever, so. Panhandling's a big deal.
And one of the other things, we, we talked about kind of a, and I, I welcome all, all ideas in terms of a, I'm gonna say an ad campaign, it's probably better to say a public information campaign.
Yeah.
You know, just trying to remind people about, you know, taking some pride in, in their own community without beating them over the head and telling them that they're bad folks. But just trying to in- incorporate some type of goodwill, uh, around, you know, litter and, and cleaning up and that, that sort of thing. And, and not just throwing stuff out of the windows and, and things like all of us probably see.
Yeah.
Uh, we're, we're dropping around.
You know, we got, Mayor, I don't know where you know about, but there's a, a, a restaurant, we tore down the, the, uh, what is it, the, uh, old Cracker Barrel got tore down. Everybody moved out. They moved right down the street. And they moved into another building down there that's, that's a vacated, uh, restaurant. And everybody, they say there's twenty, twenty-five in there living right now, same scenario. And so these gotta be mentally ill people, you know? I, I think that we got to advertise to the public how much we need mental health help for these people that are sick. I mean, I, I've talked, I know you've talked about it forever. I have been involved in meeting after meeting about there's probably a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five walking the streets of Montgomery every day that are, should be in some kind of institution or somewhere, some kind of hospital, you know? And, uh, and they're not. And, and then as a result, they're on the streets walking and, and they're dangerous to themselves and dangerous to people, so. I know we got a meeting with the probate judge in a couple of weeks, or next, next Friday week, I believe, to talk about a new crisis center, which I think will help with some of this, maybe. Anybody got anything else to talk about?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Um, one thing, um, we received a email today.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know who that individual is, I don't know if he's a police officer, formal, or, or on the force now. And I just wanted to see, how do we address that situation?
Well, I wanna, I wanna find, if you've read the, Mayor, you've been, you, you probably hadn't seen this. There's a, there's a complaint against the police department.
So, Mr. Mr. Genright, I think if we gonna discuss that, we need to discuss that because names involved, if we do it in an executive session, then we gonna put that out.
I think we're gonna find, we're looking to find out who it is and then we'll get together and talk about it.
Okay.
It's...
Mr. Genright.
Yes, sir.
Yes, and, and this is probably a discussion for Ms. Betty and, uh, Randy and us. I think there has been some confusion, Ms. Betty, on, um, how we need to do these cameras. Um, I know there's been some concern from, from Randy. I just want to make sure that the council, when we're buying these things, these cameras, that we're all on the same page and doing it right. Can you come up and we just talk about it just real briefly to make sure that we're doing it right? Um, and that we're on the same page?
Okay.
And, and, and there was new, one of the issues was that, um, I was gonna pay the, the, um...
Pay the cameras.
The camera company directly. And there was a, there was an issue about me actually signing a contract to pay that company because they want something back from the city saying, hey, we're gonna pay you, right? So I just want to, I just want, how do we need to make sure we're all doing this right?
Okay, these are the cameras that we're paying for out of the project called Star Watch.
Yes, ma'am.
Because it connects to the Star Watch system and MPDs. Okay, well, first of all, the city's not taking ownership of those cameras, okay? And we're culling them such that they do not appear on our books as fixed assets. We have to ensure that, number one. Uh, the city didn't want the liability.
Right.
So originally, we started sending the money to the president of the homeowners association to purchase those cameras. And if there's a contract that needs to be signed, only thing I'm assuming that's for is for maintenance of those cameras. Because to purchase the cameras, you shouldn't have to have a contract. Our union uses an invoice once the, uh, cameras have been installed. And then we process the check, send it to the homeowners association and they pay for them.
Mr. President, it, Ms. Betty...
Clay, go ahead.
The, the contract, although I do agree with you, and, and I have done a few of these where, um, the homeowners association have asked for financial assistance and then the money is sent and then they execute the contract. There is no asset, it's an, it's a software as a service.
Mm-hmm.
So the company owns the camera.
Okay.
They're just basically giving, uh, the information to Star Watch, to Montgomery Police Department. If there was an incident, um, that you could go and, and, so, so there, you're paying an annual fee for the software as a service.
Actually for the information.
A contract for that?
Ma'am.
Are they requiring that a contract be signed?
Yeah, they, they require a contract so that, you know, somebody keeps paying. Although I personally, and this is to the rest of the council, um, I have been and I will continue to do so to my abilities, empower the association as they see fit, if that makes any sense.
Okay, well, first of all, I would think, we don't, the city does not want to take on a liability for a, a maintenance agreement.
Yeah, yeah, there, there is no maintenance, so they, they cover all the maintenance.
Okay.
There is no...
But it's a service contract.
It's a service, it is a service fee simply for the access to information, if that makes any sense.
Okay, so would that not need to go through the homeowners president to sign off on that?
You can, it can, but it should.
And I'm gonna defer to Stacy on this, the legality of it and all. I mean, I do the numbers, but as far as whether or not it would be something that the city should take liability for and be responsible for, uh, I would be saying no. If the homeowners association is gonna be paying for the service...
What do we do, Betty? What do we do with the red light cameras?
What do you mean?
Well, what's the liability of the city with the red light cameras that are up now? We, we collect a fee off of that.
Well, we used to, we don't collect much of one anymore.
Huh?
We don't much of one anymore.
Now, now, we do have red light, we still get red light, we don't have speed cameras.
She's just saying not a lot.
Charlie, what happened, Mr. President? What's happening, what I understand, understand on the red light camera, yeah, you might get a ticket, it's up to the individual to pay it. But legally, you don't have to pay it anymore. The city's not collecting any money on that.
But, Mr. President, I guess I'm at a disadvantage because my neighborhood associations are not financially stable and some of them don't have neighborhoods that I want cameras in.
You gotta bring that point up, that's, that's the point I'm, I'm up against with District Three.
Well, if I don't have a neighborhood association in that area, how can I pay anything towards that? But who, who would want to, if I don't want to take that responsibility, you think somebody else in a neighboring neighborhood would want to sign they, they name on a contract?
Well, not a... Brantley's got a question. Brantley first, Brantley up.
I can understand the city not wanting to take on the liability, but you're not really, you're not purchasing an asset, you're, you're paying a two-year, paying for a two-year service for them to come set a poll and provide information to...
But it's the information going to the police department, Star Watch program. And, and that's where I get back at it. If you're gonna support the Star Watch program, these cameras are the way to do it from the neighborhoods. And just like in Oronde's situation, I've got the same situation in District Three. These people don't have a active neighborhood association, but they have crime. And these cameras would help the police department police that neighborhood if they had the cameras in there to back up what they're doing. And our objective when we put Star Watch in was to really get as many cameras as possible into the Star Watch program where it would give the police department backup on all their police officers and give us a situation where we'd have need for less police officers because we'd have more eyes out there with the camera situation. So I think as a city, we've got to decide, are the cameras an asset for the police department? Or they're an asset for the neighborhood associations? But every neighborhood I've got them in, it's all about the neighborhood knowing the police have got better protection for them. So the data in these cameras is for the police department, it's really not for the neighborhoods. Not a single one of them want that, that information because they don't have, know how to use it. They just, when they have a problem, they want it turned over to the police so the police can solve the crime. So I think that's where we back on this whole deal. Why, why is Star Watch begin here anyway? It's all about supporting the police department and making the police department more efficient.
Well, I got a question. When you don't have a neighborhood association, can't we not start a neighborhood watch if they don't want to be an assoc, or something to have?
The people are not there. I mean, I, in this situation, I maybe have one or two people.
That's the problem, Genright, we just really want to talk about it. If you've got a community that nobody cares, I mean, they want somebody else to come monitor, somebody else to watch, they don't want to put no effort in, that's the issue. We got to start coming up to the plate for our own neighborhoods. Why are we waiting for somebody else to... There's no way Oronde or Councilman Mitchell is gonna be able to police every community in his district. He need help. It's just all to it.
How is Star Watch funded?
What?
How is Star Watch funded?
Pull up your mic, I can't hear you.
How is Star Watch funded?
How is it funded? Through the police department, it's part of the police department.
Why can't all this stuff go through Star Watch? If it's...
It could, it needs to be part of Star Watch. It really does, it does.
They can't pay for the cameras. They don't, they don't have a problem with watching and, you know, whatever, but the cameras.
You're paying for a service.
How, how's go, but...
I think we need to...
But we're paying them for the services in order to use their cameras. They're not bringing their cameras for free now. That's, yeah, you know? And so if MPD had enough cameras to put in our communities, then they probably would. But they don't have enough cameras to put in all of our neighborhoods to kind of watch like this flock program could do, you know, so...
Well, I think you get down to the bottom line though, Star Watch was a support system for the Montgomery Police Department. And any way you can support and improve that Star Watch program, you need to do that. And I, I think it gets back to everything about these cameras is all about the police department. It's not about the neighborhoods.
Well, so it looks like we need to sit down and try to write plans and come up with a policy and procedure on that.
I, I'm, I'm, you, Betty, I think the reality, we, we gotta look at what we're really trying to do.
Well, and part of the, uh, problem is if those cameras are on private property and they're owned by the homeowners association, the homeowners association is the one governing how those cameras are situated, what they're looking at. There's a lot of litigation on, uh, cameras that the, that municipalities or governments put out, what they're taking pictures of, the red light cameras. We can't take pictures of the individuals in the vehicles, we take pictures of tags and descriptions of vehicles. Same with cameras placed on right of ways or, or private property. If we're signing those agreements, we're saying we're responsible for what those pictures are, what those videos are of and that they're constitutionally sound. And if they're not, and if they're challenged, the city's liable for that. So, so that is a big part of it. I know I've talked to MPD and they were trying to get, uh, we worked with them to try to get an easement at an apartment complex so that we could put a camera there that we owned and that we could hook up to Star Watch. It turns out the owners of the apartment complex didn't want to give us an easement. They were, they would allow us to put it on their property, but we couldn't do that if they sold it and then we couldn't get access to our camera anymore. So if, if it's a situation where we can control the camera, then we can do that. But it does create liability on us if those cameras are tampered with in some way. With the homeowners association owning it, governing the way they're situated on the property and then signing off to us, it's almost like getting an anonymous tip or if someone finds something illegally, finds out something illegally and reports it to the police, we're not responsible for the fact that they may have obtained the information illegally. But if the police had obtained the information illegally, then certainly the police couldn't use that information. Same, same situation. So, so there are some issues and it may be that we do need to just sit down and talk about what you guys are wanting to do and how we can facilitate that. Um, but there would have to be some parameters in place and somebody to, to oversee these cameras, how they're positioned and what they're, what they're being used for. Because, and I can't speak directly, I'm not very familiar with Star Watch, but a lot of those cameras are privately owned. And the private businesses are giving us access to them. We'd even talked about requiring clubs to have cameras that would act, that, uh, were, the technology would allow Star Watch to, to access them. So I know we, uh, work with private businesses, same with HOAs. Um, there are some issues with putting them on our right of ways and us being responsible, even if it's a software agreement.
So I'm not real sure what to do.
I'm not either. I mean, the reality of it...
So if we want to give it to the neighborhood association, we can go ahead and continue putting up cameras. If you're gonna pay through it, if the city's gonna write flock camera X amount of dollars, we need to hold up and find a policy, how we're gonna do it. Is that, okay?
That's what I see.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
I will do all mine.
Well, that's what I tried to do, they, they don't want to do that either. I mean, the, the reality of it is, we got, we either gotta get into Star Watch or get out. If we're not gonna support Star Watch, we hang it up, close it up. Chief, you might be able to tell us a little something. What was that, about Star Watch?
Who, me?
Yeah. Chief? Yeah, we're talking about Star Watch. Can you hear me? Come on, we're trying to figure out how to deal with the cameras of Star Watch. You know, we're trying to get more cameras to the police department, but right, we're only be able to, under present conditions, we can only put those to neighborhood associations. And, and talking to Chief Finley, he was saying the more cameras you got, the better off he is. You know, the better off y'all are because you got more eyes watching the neighborhoods.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, so we're trying to help you with that, and that's our objective. Because we, we're not in law enforcement, the homeowners associations are not law enforcement, y'all are law enforcement. And the only thing we can give you is give you the data off these cameras to help you enforce the law. So that's what we're trying to do, that's what we're talking about. So now you know where we're at.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else to be brought up? Meeting adjourned at five o'clock.